I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your head for a moment.
Dear Heavenly Father, first of all, I want to thank you for this wonderful change of seasons weather that we're having. Feel fortunate compared to those that have not had such great weather. And looks like others are not gonna have some great weather coming up soon. Please watch over all those that have had issues, problems, concerns, and loss in their lives through the recent floods and whatnot. Please watch over this group of people as we care for our community greatly. We're here for all of them and for you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Alright, reading and approval of the minutes please for the last meeting.
Motion approved, suspend read.
It's a motion by... Weidrich, can I second? Boy, my brain is slow. Name again is, uh... CTE maybe. Yeah, we have motion of second. Discussion. All favor of the minutes? Say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I'm sorry, that was not the minutes. That wasn't the minutes. Approve the agenda. Any changes or additions to the agenda? So, move. Okay, motion by Stern? Second by Weidrich. Discussion. All favor of the agenda, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Grant, you are up. Engineer's report.
Alright, you guys have the packet with you or have a chance to review the packet?
Looked at, uh, with me.
Okay. So I'll start at the top. We have quite a bit going on in town. So at the top, we have Expedition Estates. I've been talking with John on that. We've been coordinating. So we're working for the contractor to inspect that work, make sure it's done in accordance with the city. Um, so we're also working with the city. But our contract is with the contractor on this one, or the developer. So as an update, they finished their utility testing. They have the water tested in the sewer. There's one spot in the sewer they do have to fix. Um, they got their mandrel. So they have to run a circular circular object through there basically and pull it to check for deflection. The pipe can't be more than five percent deflected. And this one spot, the mandrel, got stuck, so it's more than five percent deflected. So they'll have to dig that spot up and correct it, which, to be honest, one spot is pretty good for how deep they are out there and happy to correct that, so we're pretty happy with that. They did have to fix that and then they'll have to re-mandrel that in the end. So we always make sure it does pass in the end. So they'll get that done. Once they're done there, we can start on the subgrade. We'll do a proof roll on the subgrade. And then the aggregate as well. They'll have to haul in rock to start building that roadway section. And then paving is the last thing. So we're waiting for all that to be done and then paving to finish that. Any questions out there? No approvals on that project, just an update.
How deep were they, they have to repair it?
Um, John thought it was between sixteen and eighteen. So not the deepest, but still pretty deep.
Is that gonna get done yet this fall?
With everything?
Well, with the digging already.
Yes, the digging will be done for sure. They are planning to have everything done this year. That's the plan right now. Yes, that's their plan. Obviously, it's snow tomorrow.
Or it's not one of the two.
Yeah. So that's it for Expedition Estates. The other one's the alley. Um, Wingcliff Construction is doing the alley behind the bank with the city parking lot as well. So they are doing that, ripping all that asphalt out and then redoing that concrete. So the parking lot, the alley, it'll be concrete. He, I just drove by, he has almost the full alley done. Looks like there's the last quarter or third left. And then, um, half the parking lot, it looks like. So it's making progress. I expect that last bit of the parking lot to go pretty quick. The alley, just next to the buildings and private work, is a little more detailed and precise, so, um, hopefully you wrap that up here pretty quick. I do have a couple approvals here. So change order one for this project. We knew this was going to end, but we had given the private businesses and the opportunity to also get their parking lots done back there and change order into this project. And then we would special assess it back to them. And all the businesses, except for one, I believe, right, Monte? I think it's just one business that didn't do it and they had a nice parking lot already, so it made sense. And all the businesses did decide to go through and get their private parking lot replaced. So we have to change order that stuff into the work, just for the city to special assess it back. And one other thing in that change order is it's just the completion date for one of those private parking lots, because he was added really late and he'd already gone by it. So in order for him to get the alley and the parking lot done, that one might get done next year, which isn't a big deal. Everything's set up to tie in perfectly, so um, he mu- he doesn't think he'll get to that private area next, or this year. So he'll just have to come back next year to complete it. So change order one does adjust that completion date for the private business there. The rest of the work is scheduled to be done this year. So I would ask for approval for change order one. Um, this change order is for fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents. And that would be for private business work.
Motion by... Weidrich?
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion.
So the total total, I guess, like number of total number of, I guess, total number, I guess, of over the lot owners and they're gonna have it done. Was it the next seven of them or five or something?
This one was five.
Five, six.
Oh, but one then?
Yeah, and the one, I think the IBEW had nice new concrete back there, so it didn't
You know, discussion. Go call.
Weidrich?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
Folkers?
Aye.
Omen Hour?
Aye.
And the second thing there is Wingcliff Pay Application One. So this would be for the work he's completed, some of the private work that we just change ordered in. And then the first part of that alley. Um, payout one is for one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety-four cents. Looks like it's just under half of his contract.
Motion by Weidrich.
Second.
Second by Folkers. Discussion. Go call.
Weidrich?
Aye.
Folkers?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
Omen Hour?
Aye. Motion carried.
Alright, then moving down to water meter replacement. Uh, DSG did the water meter replacement in town. Um, they wrapped that up. They did turn over forty-six non-responsive accounts to the city. So the city will work to get those done as they can get responses or whatever. And it ends up being talking with David. It sounds like there's a few left to do. The city's been doing quite a pool.
I believe everything that is occupied has been done. There are some unoccupied buildings right now that we're just gonna wait until we turn the water back on. Then we'll change them at that time.
The process went pretty smooth, I think. Um, DSG did a pretty good job. So the only thing we have left there would be the final payout and balancing change order. Obviously, the meters that you guys installed, you won't pay DSG for the installation of those, so there'll be a balancing change order in the end on this. And they did not send that yet, so I don't have anything for tonight on that project. Okay, then down to sanitary sewer improvements. So this is the project that we did with the lining and spot repairs on the sanitary sewer. We bid this project on September twenty-sixth. We received four bids for the work. We only opened three of them. One of the bids, they did, they had a pending contractor's license. And we maybe could have looked into if we could have opened or not, but talking with the contractor, he told me straight up he would have been in third place before. So it wasn't even worth the conversation. We just threw their bid out. Um, so we opened three of the bids. The bid to have an engineer, engineer state of the cost, we're giving you guys this packet, but um, the bids came in high and we don't know if, well, due to a couple things. One, the time of year is not great. Contractors, it's early, so they're getting out ahead of stuff, but um, another thing is the spot repairs and uncertainty. So if you remember, there was a few areas in town that we didn't have televised or the televising was over. Um, so we did the par grant to televise about half of the remaining VCP. And then the remainder of it, we just had to assume a certain amount of spot repairs. So in the bid, about two hundred and sixty-five thousand of that of the bid accounts for unknowns. And that was just what we put in there for assumptions of spot repairs and then the restoration of the roadway above it. Um, there were twelve known spot repairs and then we estimated about fifteen additional that would pop up during the televising. So when we bid it, we told the contractor that they had to come in and televise the stuff that we designated in the plans that we didn't have televised before two weeks prior to doing spot repairs. And then we would review that, let them know where the spot repairs were, and then they could fix those. Whether there are fifteen on those blocks or not, we have no idea. I mean, it's a blind guess. There could be zero spot repairs on that block and we would be removing two hundred and sixty-five thousand. So there were a couple ways we could have done it. We could have just bid it with no other spot repairs and then just ran the risk of adding two hundred and sixty-five thousand to the project. Another thing of that is we have an SRF loan. And if you have to do a loan increase, you're looking at a bunch of paperwork and bond council, which is usually a couple thousand dollars. So we assumed high, which might not be the best because it inflated our bid prices. Um, so bids came in high. That's the moral of the story. Our engineers' estimate going into the bid was one point nine five seven. And the low bid was two point six six one. So they were about seven hundred thousand dollars over. So even removing the two hundred and sixty-five thousand of unknowns, it was still about five hundred thousand. So going forward and the bids, we received, we opened three of them. And talking with the contractor, the fourth one, they were fairly close. So it's not like it was one way down here and one way up here. They were fairly close in the ballpark, which just kind of says that, says that they all saw the same thing understood it the same way. So moving forward from here, it's options, what you guys can do. Um, we just tried to lay it out the best we could of what you guys can do moving forward. It's early, it's October. There's no rush to do it now. They're not gonna do work this year. Even if we award this project right now, they're not gonna do work. So we can take our time. These bids are good for sixty days. Um, so we can take our time, think about it, run different scenarios, look at different things, talk with contractors, whatever you guys want us to do. We already did some of that background look, um, research on this. So if we accept the bids the way they are now, um, the specials that we were projecting would go from thirty-two hundred dollars to forty-three hundred dollars on just like the average lot. So we did, we did a, by units. So there's a one-unit household and then a half unit. The half unit were the lots that previously had sewer work done from their house. And then we took the highest water users in the town. And then we got an equivalent usage value based off of the average water usage in town. So it's all based off of units. So one unit would get a forty-three hundred dollar assessment if you accept the bids the way they are. It'd go up eleven hundred dollars over thirty years. Or we can reject bids and rebid it. And when we rebid it, we can rebid it as is and just try it again at a different time. We could separate the contracts. So on this project, you have a lining contractor that would bid on it. You would have a spot repaired contractor, which would be just your underground digging contractor. And then you'd have a manhole rehabilitation contractor, so we included that as well. And looking at the bids on this, um, the spot repairs and manhole rehabilitation came in higher. The lining was right where we're supposed to be. So a lot of what we saw were lining contractors bidding as prime. And then the other two, manhole and spot repair, bidding as subs. So maybe they inflated the price of subs. Maybe the primes inflated their price when they were getting it from the sub and submitting that. So it's hard to tell. But that would be another option. We could break this into two or three contracts. Another one would just be to adjust the project scope. Whether we reduce it just to the known areas or we just cut certain areas out of it. We don't do manhole rehab. Whatever you guys think there as well, there's options. And then lastly, we could just go ahead and privately televise the unknown areas, just so we have more clarity on what the project scope includes. It would be right around, looking at their bids for the additional televising, it'd be right around fifty thousand dollars for them to do that. Those unknown areas. There's twelve thousand, three hundred feet of old or unknown sanitary sewer.
And granted, when we say old, are we talking ten years?
Um, seven to eight years. So we don't have to make a decision. I think contractors are gonna continue to hound us, but we can fend them off for a little while if you guys wanna think about it, look at your options, look at your financials. Call us with questions or different ideas as well. We can figure something out.
I don't think we should accept those bids. I think we should rebid and possibly boy, we balance out spending fifty thousand dollars on televising and know exactly what we have. And then we can't say, okay, it might cost us another quarter of a million dollars or it might not cost us a quarter of a million dollars to do all these spot repairs that we are assuming might be there.
Didn't we get a grant to televise the rest of it?
So we got a grant to televise. We went up to fifty thousand dollars.
The par grant, yeah.
Just wondering why we didn't do all of it.
Questions? Thoughts?
I wouldn't be opposed to televising. And we know what we got.
Neither would I. This is on Jones or Big? Yeah, that's a big.
I would think of televising, even though it's you know, I mean you know, I mean like old and stuff. I would think there's I think there's not gonna be a be, I mean, a huge, I guess, like change.
I would think so. Either way, it's gotta be televised.
And some of this stuff with like the seven to eight-year-old sewer too, the technology was so bad that it's almost not even watchable too. It's like seven to eight years ago. It, it's hard to even tell what's going on in some of them. But I, I agree. Like, there might be one or two that maybe pop up, but I think just the clarity of the video too would help and the mapping that they provide. Um, yeah, that would help a lot.
Is that something we could get done this fall slash winter or?
I actually just called the televising companies on the way up here and that's what I was thinking too is it would maybe they could fit it in. Like, if, we have great weather through December again, like last year, maybe they could fit it in. Or even through November, but I don't know if they could.
Realistically, probably not.
Yeah. And that's something to consider as well. So when we also bid these projects, we, we include ten percent contingency. So we receive construction bids for two point six million dollars as a little bid. So we have two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars of contingency already built in. So essentially, when we we bid those unknowns, what happened is it just doubled the contingency. So you could pull that contingency out or that, those unknowns out and just assume contingency. Anything over that would obviously just be a project increase. Um, so it's risk that way, but essentially what we did is it just doubled the contingency. That's another way to look at that.
So Grant, are you saying if we do the if we get everything to camera again? It might be January, February? To get everything camera in or?
It may be later than that.
Or later?
It has to be above thirty-two degrees.
Well, it does. On top or down in the?
I think they call for on top. It's where they're at. I was surprised by that too when they told me. I've lost the steam down there. It's hard to see.
Okay. Then that might push the bidding back too far and we're, then we're in trouble that way too.
Or that's a cool doing that new year.
Yeah.
Push the whole project back down over here.
What are your thoughts on separate contracts? Anybody have thoughts, concerns, questions about that? So a lot of times what you see-
Explain, explain the separating.
So a lot of times what you see from contractors is whoever wants to prime it is gonna lead it. They're gonna be the general contractor, main point of contact. Um, they'll have a lot, the bonds, the insurance, all of that. And then the subcontractors submit their bids to the prime contractor. Prime contractors will always add ten to fifteen percent on top of those just for their overhead fee and payroll and paying the subs, that type of stuff. So breaking it out, you more than likely would remove that. You also have a little, when you do that, you have a little extra engineering and city staff time to do three payouts and change orders and that stuff, but you're probably saving in the end. And contractors might bid it more aggressively, just have, have enough prime opportunity.
Would you end up getting more bid possibly through that?
Potentially, yes. Yeah. So you might get some local guy that just wants to do the spot repairs then.
Yep, that's kind of what I was thinking.
Yep.
Local guy that does most of our work.
Yep.
I wouldn't be opposed to split. As long as the main guys don't back off because of it.
Yeah, yeah. I don't think they would, you would make that happen.
Are there two main contractors that do ca- uh, video camera work?
Yeah, pipe detectives and CC steel are kind of the main.
Okay.
There's also PACE. You guys have used-
Yeah, we've used PACE before.
Yeah.
Would it be us that needs to contact those three or would it be you guys to see if we get that done this fall?
We could do that, yeah. So I've already contacted two of the three. So I'll just reach out to PACE.
If we push this back to the next meeting, is that waiting too long or?
I can obviously look in between now and then, kind of to the televising. Yeah, I can check on that.
And if we can get one that can do it this fall yet, I think that'd be the better way to go, but if not, then I think we need to look at splitting it up.
The hard part, I think, is it's gonna be a little bit of a gamble with weather. And their price might show that if you're gonna put a completion date of this fall on them that they need to be done, they might they might ramp their price up just because, like I said, three weeks if it would be below thirty-two degrees they probably have a workload yet, so it might be a little tough to put that completion date on them, but you could tell them we need it done by July of twenty-five, something like that. But I can call and see if they'll be able to.
So, so anyway, you know, there's all these videos and stuff. You know that I think, I guess I've watched those, you know, you know. And, and, and I mean, I think the quality is, I mean, like really really, I mean, really nice well, you know, you know, so I mean so I guess I don't think that that's gonna be, uh, be, I mean, uh, you'll be, like, able to see see, I guess see, I guess, the new things, I guess, that we didn't see here before.
Yeah. The other thing is like seven to eight years, you will see some stuff change or pop up. And then while we have some old videos, we also have missing videos that we don't have anything for. So that while some of them might be useful and we can use a few of them, we also are missing quite a bit of tape footage of those areas that we don't have.
So that's why it's gone.
I, either we never had it or it just, the tapes got lost. I don't know, or PACE. Yeah, or maybe it never got done. I'm not sure.
So you're leaning towards not doing any more televising at all?
Yeah, and, and/or, I mean I mean this clay tile pipe, I don't think is the next batch shape. You know, this project, I don't think needs to be done. You know, I mean, even if you look at, I think, like over over and over and, I mean, like earthen stuff, you know, I mean when they're using like clay tile pipe and it's you know, it's really old pipe, you know, it's like five hundred years old or, you know, so I mean you know, it's not like it's a bad project, but
I think the project needs to be done, but I know, I understand what you're saying. Um, so if we when it went forward, did it without any more televising, split the, split it up, we could hear some reporters saying, well, we found fifteen more and we're another quarter of a million dollars into it. That scares me a little bit.
We bid that in the project though, so that wasn't included.
That's, that's the contingency.
Yeah. Well, no, that's in their actual bid.
Okay.
So they're already expecting that there are fifteen more.
Okay, just don't know to what degree.
Correct, yep. Yeah, with that, I, I like the idea of televising it just so we, we know a better idea of what we're getting into.
Do we have any spots right now, maybe David, you know too, but that are really bad? Like, we can't wait another year on, on some of these spots.
I thought that was that one s- section of steel pipe that's pretty old corroded or something. I can't remember where that was at.
So steel pipe, cast iron, what they use that for is when they cross water main. A lot of times they use, did that in the old day, days, instead of using VCP or that, they put cast iron and centered it, so that way you didn't have any joints, because that VCP is like three foot sections and has a lot of joints. So you do get a lot of infiltration in there, which also means it could leak. So they always use that cast iron to separate the water in the sewer. And that cast iron corrodes over time. So when you're watching televising, you go through and you can see VCP and then all of a sudden it shrinks down, it's cast iron, and it's really corroded. So that has a potential to back up. But they can actually do extensive cleaning on that and come in and scrub that and come back and make it look like normal. Um, you still have cast iron in the ground, but it is cleaned at that point. And that's not that expensive to do that, so that's something we could get done. There are some spot repairs that you don't know if they're gonna break this year. But they're cracked, they're broken pipe. Or sometimes they're missing the pipe above and it's just dirt right there that's held up. Whether it falls in this year or in five years, you don't really know. But there are spots where there's a missing pipe or something. Or a big sag and all it takes is a couple clumps of toilet paper to come through and it's backed up and you have sewer backup. I wish I had a crystal ball to say when they're gonna break or fall in or you have a sink hole, but I don't, so yeah.
Okay.
But there are spots that are worse than others.
Can we have some cost sharing on this?
No.
Oh.
This is just a, it'd be a loan, just loan.
So wouldn't that be weighted, nothing's down on something?
If we haven't done the application, the loan application, you do that after the bids, just to make sure the price is set. So your next meeting will be, um, today's seventh, fourteenth, twenty-first. So I think the lowest number of days that a bid is held is thirty. Um, I think we usually do sixty, so we bid this on the twenty-sixth. Their bids will be good until the twenty-sixth of October. So we can make a big till next meeting. Worst case, you know, it's held for thirty days.
Let's wait till next meeting. Why don't you give us, let us know what pace- Let's wait till next meeting, why don't you give us, let us know what Pace says or all those guys. Uh, you're probably right, we're probably gonna be elevated pricing, and they probably have loads already that they've gotta do. Then we'll look at maybe do something different then. Split it or wait wait a year? Do a couple of spots that we think are bad, maybe, I I don't know, could only do some of those spots?
Yeah.
Dave?
I know just Jared or whatever had a couple manholes that he really kinda wanted to get done, or whatever with this spot repair, or with this project, or whatever.
Three have of the manholes.
Yes, I don't, I think he had five or something like that, he'd like to have done. I mean, with this project, they were included, but the ones that we have had done have really like their jetting load. And and man hours playing in these manholes, so the ones we have probably have really made a difference. I don't know, that has nothing to do with the relining of the spot repair, but I just want to let you guys know that the manholes that were approved the last couple of years have really made a difference.
Good to know. Any other thoughts, any other direction you wanna go?
Okay, um, quickly, last one, number five on there is the City Guard Asphalt Country. Quality asphalt is still under contract, contract to come in and do those spot repairs, water main break areas, small asphalt fixes in town. So their plan is to come in and do that at the same time as, um, Otter Tail Loop there, so they will be, uh, hopefully here in the next couple of weeks, month-ish, to do that.
Aaron will be in town tomorrow.
He's coming to just look at stuff tomorrow.
He's actually gonna prep the most tomorrow, he wants me to pick him around and show him, he actually wants to start prepping it.
Okay.
So he'll probably start to activate it for other people, like they.
You got quality?
Yeah, yeah.
Why don't I call him, he, they don't wanna do any other jobs in town, they don't wanna do any driveways or side jobs, he said.
Yeah, end of the year. Uh, general items, there's some funding stuff open right now on the, you guys have a current twenty twenty-three D O T streets project, but I believe those funding apps are open, if there's anything you can pick up there. We are doing the S R F priority list, so every year, the S R F, which is the state revolving loan fund, that's who we would use for the sewer project to get a low-interest loan. So they have thirty-year loans at two percent right now from the bank in North Dakota. It's not set at two percent, but it has been for a while, it's no guarantee it's gonna stay there. They also do have a little bit of loan forgiveness that they do, so they they start this priority list, and if you're ranked high enough, you could get loan forgiveness for these projects up to seventy-five percent. So like Strasburg had a big health issue where their lagoon was just dumped, they didn't have a lagoon, they were dumping it into a lake. State doesn't like that, they funded that at seventy-five percent, so. Things like that, where it's a serious health need, um, say, things with water, or if it's a city that's gonna destroy their financials, things like that. So we submit you guys, you have to be on the priority list in order to get a low interest, low interest loan anyways. So there's these S R F questionnaires, is what it's called, not an application, you guys aren't required to do anything. We have it on the list every single year, just in case we make projects up, just so Gaz is on the list and we can, if you guys have a water main break on a block and you wanna replace a block, we'll have it covered under that. Um, so for the D W S R F this year, the project we submitted was just lead service line replacement. Uh, so last year we did the inventory. If we did find lead, we'll review, and there's loan cosher, actually cosher for lead service line replacements. So I think it's sixty-six thirty-three, sixty-six percent cosher on lead service line replacements. C W S R F, um, will have this project, the sewer project on there for sure, even if it's under construction, you still have to have it on there. Um, then anything after lagoons or lift stations, we work with Dave and you guys on that, just to make sure everything's covered, if something would pop up. If there's even inkling in the next three years that something might happen, we should have it on that list and just update it every year. If there's something you guys are thinking about, just let us know. On water, we can still submit, even though we're submitted, and sewer's coming up here in November. All right, any other questions for me?
Thanks, appreciate it. Moving out to eight, a commercial building permit application from the people that have the mobile pet groupie business that are leasing space from. Yeah.
Little crew, and all they're doing is separating the space that they're leasing from rights. So it defines their area, just putting in a partition wall, it'll have some electrical and some minor plumbing in it, in the old promised land design to build.
No variances?
No variances, everything's contained within the building, so.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Polkerts.
Second.
Second by Weidrich, discussion. We'll call.
Polkert, uh, Weidrich, I, Stern, I, Hoben, I.
Aye. Motion secured. All right, done with reports, water sewer. Hey, Jason's not here, Dave, you have streets.
Yeah, just some uh store damage tree stuff I wanna do working on tomorrow, just picking up stuff off the street and just putting the streets leakers on. Pretty sticky with those, so. Any word on the snowplow? Stock them the other day, I mean, it's, I'd be loving to.
Fire is buzzing.
I got nothing.
Police fire.
I have some calls of service for the police department. Officer Byers had thirty-nine for the month of September, Officer Anthony Malberg had thirty-six, Officer Samantha Malberg had thirty-eight, Chief Wolf had fifty-six. It's a pretty good numbers, I did get word that posters have been ordered, I should be here next week. Um, Tony did give me an update on the pickup, looking at end of December through February now. Through, he's giving us a time now anyways, I mean, um, that's basically all I got, um. Where are we standing on those tasers, Chief?
Working on it.
Still working on it?
Okay.
The other end, most.
Uh, light shift's been fixed, bill's been sent to Lipton Communications. Day shift wiper pump went out for the spray, that's been fixed.
Tony, so many tires on the old vehicle?
They didn't say anything last time it was him, I would have to look.
Hey, he's sending a message out to me on Friday, I suppose.
Do I have them checked out?
They've been serviced both of them last week, so I don't know if they've done any needs time or anything.
Okay.
I, like I said, I haven't checked, I couldn't have a check on the tires and stuff.
Hey, you just wanna double check, and if they do, give us some estimates, or whatever you guys wanna put on that.
We just got, we would have done that. Last year completion, deal was set first.
All right, thanks, guys. Myra, H C D.
Hmm, well, still meeting time, I went to the Critical Minerals meeting, um, at the woodshed with Jerry and Monty. Some pretty interesting stuff coming up, and we look at, is it happening, happening here, no, but can we benefit from it? We gotta figure out how we can and start preparing for that, I think, 'cause there's a lot of things going on in front of you right now. Exciting stuff. And then I'm, I'm going to attend the Western, um.
Energy Association?
Yeah, I'm gonna go to that annual meeting. And then I might go to the Biennial Legislative Workshop, just because they're talking about possibilities of tax reform, and maybe you'll need to all know about that. I asked Monty to send me the grant, too.
Yeah.
So, um, and then I started just doing some business visits, putting my card to businesses I visited with. Hazen Motors today and James at the lumberyard. So I'll try to hit most of the businesses at least. I want to just give them a card, but I mean, I'm a new person. And just get most of those people out, that's what's going to be done.
Hi, you, the Critical Minerals, the R E R Minerals meeting that we were at, so you had your handout there, did you guys get a handout of that, too? Yeah, that was super fascinating, those people are so damn smart, um, but yeah, they're looking at putting a facility in Falkirk and at Milton, or yeah, in Center. No, they told us Center. Yeah, didn't they, Marty? Yeah. Yeah, but anyhow, even though it goes to be the two locations, and that's trying to pull out those critical elements out of lignite, you know, it's still benefit our area as well for, you know, people needing places to live or people here to work in those spots, but they're they're, it's pretty amazing, they just, the biggest thing with, and there's so much federal funding, because I think the feds probably realize that, you know, with ninety percent of all the critical and rare earth elements come from enemies of the United States, you know, we need to start doing something. Or else cell phones and computers and fighter jets, everything else, or supply chain will be controlled by everybody else, but a lot of information that you wanna understand, except for it's it's needed, and we got, we've got the stuff here, so. And actually, the North American Coal, they said, well, why not Cato? North American Coal was the one that directed it to, um, Falkirk. I'm not sure if the supply is a little bit, they said the the, the, was the material better, or is that why they were going to Falkirk, Monty, Myra? Or is it location, more location?
I think it was, he didn't really give us an answer, and I don't remember, I just asked him.
No, actually, he said Cato had bettered coal, he said, but for some reason they they looked at it.
Maybe they don't have to refine it down as much then.
I don't know, but anyhow, watch for more of that to come. Moving down to eleven A eight, property listing agreement for the water plant building, anybody here wants to buy that thing tonight?
I will, that's the price you want.
Where are we, where are we gonna meet there?
I need him to fight over it, but not for that price.
Well, you should make this an offer, we're motivated sellers.
Fifteen dollar bill.
We want something cool, David.
Yeah, well.
Well, I'm cool.
Monty, wanna talk about that real quick?
Basically, in in order for Heather to keep advertising and doing all the work on this, we need a we do our listing agreement with her, as you can see, she is lower the list price a little bit, not a lot. I guess if that's something you guys wanna talk about as far as what you're expecting to get out of this, or at least a minimum you wanna get out of this.
I feel like that price is way too high. Um, we've had it on the market for over a year-ish already, and I haven't had really a single offer.
Lot of interest.
Well, I am true, but not, not even an offer, you know.
Right, not even something to work with.
It tells me they're not even in the ballpark, you know. I feel like we can lower it by quite a bit, and hopefully we can get a business in there that will help our community out.
Yeah. Do we pay, do we pay anything to have that sitting there, like what, what is the, this utilities?
Just a little bit of electricity and lawn mowing, so it's really not costing us any money to sit there, but.
But still, something could be in there and still be doing better than what it is right now.
Well, we can direct Heather how we feel, so it's, where are you, where are you thinking to lower to?
I, I guess I don't really know, but I was kinda thinking between a hundred, hundred and fifty range myself, I don't know how you guys all feel about that, but I would rather see it be used than sit there empty.
Yeah, I agree.
You know, and we're not really.
We tried, we tried, so.
Is that including the land that's to the west of it?
Yes.
All, the whole, whole lot, right? And what was ever decided with what's going on with the other drones?
That's included.
They use the way it is.
As it is the way it is, yeah. So if I bought, I could make it into a cool fort down there.
Cool. In your shooting range.
So long, but yeah.
A lot of solid, yeah. Silence is magnetic, yeah.
And I know a guy for that.
Yeah, I think Casey.
Well, I would think that, I think that, I mean, if we wanna grow, you know, and I mean, I don't think we wanna sell, sell like this a piece of property that's, I guess, right beside here, you know, at a low price, but, yeah.
So you're thinking just hold on to it in case you wanna add on to the city hall?
I would think if they wanna pay, I guess, that price, that'd be great, you know, but but I don't think we wanna just, I throw it away.
No.
So, but.
What are your thoughts to be at one fifty, or one twenty-five? And adding on to the city hall, you're looking at half a million dollars to, it's, it's, it's crazy what to.
It could be awesome if we could like.
It would be, but I just, it's a lot of money. By the way, the the gals in the office told me that since this past, since the first of the year, we've had one wedding in the city hall?
I heard a couple of comments about that being, yeah.
Twenty-four, we've only had one wedding?
Right? Normally we have five or six. It's a venue that's being used less for things like that, you know, um, it's still being used for, you know, Senate's annual meeting, hospital auxiliary and things like that, but people want people want cooler venues for, for weddings and I think it's very affordable.
If you lower the price that much, do you need a Realtor? I mean, you've advertised it before at a pretty
Right.
You know, higher rate, but you might consider, if you're gonna drop the price that much, just advertise in yourselves again, and save yourselves six percent or whatever she's, or fee is.
What is the fee, Monty?
Six percent.
And what is it costing us to renew this agreement, anything?
Nothing.
Okay.
Oh, how do you think, if she does do the advertising?
Yeah, she goes.
Marketing, oh, do you wanna look at it?
I couldn't open that document on my, on my computer, but it's an exclusive, does that mean that she's not putting on M O F O listed?
It is on M O F O.
It is?
Mm-hmm. Is it, Monty, I thought it was the.
Is it dual representation, does that check, does she represent both buyer and seller?
This is checked, this accepts, the seller accepts dual agency representation.
Should we have her lowered to one fifty?
Yeah, yeah, it is fair.
We're just gonna go through this today.
Do you need a motion, Monty?
I'll make a motion to lower the, uh, listing to one fifty, hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the building.
Motion by Folkers.
Second.
Second by Weidrich, discussion.
Now, will that, will this motion also cover. Her proposal here, or do we have to make a separate motion for that? You know, have another listed, or do we have to change the motion to include it? What, what I'll do is, is report that the motion was to enter in the listing agreement, and to change the. List price from one ninety-eight five to one hundred and fifty.
Okay. We have motion and second, and we're discussion. Roll call.
Folkers.
Aye.
Weidrich, aye. Stern.
Aye.
Omenauer.
Aye, motion carried.
Great. You interested now?
No.
If somebody wanted, if somebody wanted to see. You show it, or? Sort of for that, but, yeah, to show up, though, I think you don't need that.
Yeah.
Give the chickens a wild moment.
That's right, yeah.
You got a whole lot of chickens.
All right, uh, moving down, approval of bills?
No.
No, I'm sorry.
Budget.
Yes, that's right, we need to open our public hearing, at this time we will have. Where do we want to wait, Monty?
We're after six, so it's gonna be.
All right. Moving now, to the public hearing for our city budget. Anybody here to speak in opposition, or in favor of changing anything with the city budget?
We received no written comments on the budget.
Okay. At this time, we will close the public hearing. And. Back to our regular meeting. Monty, I don't want us to proceed now.
Following, we need a motion.
Okay. Board discussion, or motion to approve the, the budget that you had in front of you for a while?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Weidrich.
Second.
Second by Folkers. Discussion. Roll call.
Weidrich, aye. Folkers, aye. Stern, aye. Omenauer.
Aye, motion carried, thank you all. All right, um, thirteen public comments, I forgot to cover that one, none. Approval of bills, please.
Motion to approve bills as presented.
Motion by Weidrich.
Second.
Second by Folkers. Discussion. Roll call.
Weidrich, aye. Folkers.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Omenauer.
Aye, motion carried. Meeting adjourned, thank you.
Hey, Jim?
Yeah.
Your president, your representative, check.
Oh, yeah, oh, everybody.